Let's present who?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Huh? Please have a seat. I have been looking forward to this for about a month and a half. Ever since Jim told me that you'd like to come down and see us. We're just a little post, as are many, many other posts throughout the Commonwealth. So it's an honor and a pleasure for us to have you here today. You may be answering some tough questions, but according to Jim, you can handle them. Without further ado, I would like to introduce someone. Today politicians are not the most liked people, except in Attleboro. We have Jim Hawkins, who has been with us four years, four, five?
Four terms.
Four terms. Anytime we've needed anything, he's been a phone call away. And I have another gentleman here, our state representative, Paul Feeny.
Senator.
Same thing.
Senator.
Senator, didn't I say? I apologize. I can make you the president if you want that.
Please no.
Again, politician, but he's well-liked and not only-liked. He and Jim are loved in the city. They do immense things for us, with us. They always know, want to know what we need, what they can do. And everything that I've brought, pretty much, they've taken care of for me. So this little community has a very special, warm feeling for Representative Jim Hawkins. Come up, please.
I would clarify some of the things you said, Jerry. It seems to me, I mentioned something that's needed in the community. We need a place to serve meals to the homeless people. We need a place to have a food drive. And you always don't say yes, you say yes, you can use our facility, but you participate in them as well. I have to say that my association with Post 115 here and Post 312 in South Attleboro is probably one of the better associations in my political career, to meet you and get to know who you are. It's a different, a different atmosphere of respect. People who've been, who've known each other for decades, who are hardwired, they gave of themselves, they sacrificed as adults, and then in later life, they sacrificed for the good of the community. Great, great group. I was thrilled when the secretary, I saw him at the State House, he said, you know, we could come out and have a roundtable where the veterans get to talk about some of their issues. And I'm thinking, wow, what an opportunity. I've known the secretary when he was a state rep. And there's no grass growing under his feet. He's a good runner, he's an emergency room physician, very vocal as a state rep on some very important healthcare issues that nobody else would have taken up but him. And obvious, obvious choice for the newly created Office of Secretary of Veterans Affairs. We've needed that for a long time, I'm glad that that's now part of the cabinet. And what a clear-cut choice, somebody who gets stuff done in that jaw. And I'm glad to have this opportunity to share his skill and passion with all of you. Do you want to say something? Senator, did you want to say something?
No, I'm always happy to be here, Representative, thank you, and I agree with everything you said about the secretary.
All I care is I speak before you do.
No, no, no.
That's the only thing I care about.
I'm good, I don't want to get in the way of the secretary.
Secretary, Secretary Santiago.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's great to be here on this beautiful day. Madam Mayor, thank you for welcoming to the city, it's great to be here. Please let me know I can support you and your team. I talked to Ben here, Ben's been fantastic, 100-plus from Chapter 115 clients you have, so thank you for what you do each and every day. To the representative and the senator, you have two elected officials representing you on Beacon Hill that do fantastic work. They support our veteran community, they support the governor's agenda, which is built there to support our veterans, so we're excited about that. Paul, thanks for playing a role in setting this up. And Commander, I'm having a good time getting to know you. And to the incoming commander, where are you guys? Congratulations on your new post.
Thank you.
It's great to be here, and I thought what I'd do is I'd just spend just a couple of minutes talking about what we've been up to over the past year plus four months, who's counting, right? 16, 17 months here. And what we've been up to at the Executive Office of Veteran Services. As the representative said, it's a brand-new office. For decades, for a very long time, it had been an office, a department really, in this executive office of Health and Human Services. Now, if you would give me a second here to explain what that means. Health and Human Services is the biggest secretary in the Commonwealth, that's half the state budget. And it has like 16, 17 departments, this was one of 16. So as a result, you could say that, given the bureaucracy, how big it is, perhaps the Department of Veteran Services didn't get the attention, the resources that it needed. And so what happens? When COVID struck, March 2020, a couple of tragic things happened. At Holyoke and Chelsea, over 100 veterans died. And I think what the investigations showed, that as a result of perhaps some parochialism, some incompetence, some mismanagement, folks died. And so the legislature took action alongside Governor Baker. Folks like Rep Hawkins, Senator Feeny, and myself at the time, voted on the bill to elevate this department to a secretariat. Now, I will say, this is something the veteran community has been fighting for for a very long time. How can we get a front seat when it comes to advocacy? How can we make sure the governor, the senators, the representatives are paying attention and doing the work that they need to do to support our veterans? And I'm glad to say that we passed that bill my last term as a state rep. So fast forward a couple of months, I am now deployed, I'm also in the Army Reserve still, I've been there for about 10, 12 years, I'm a major currently, deployed a couple of times. We finished session, I'm deployed to Syria at the time, I get a call from our governor, and she says, you know what? We owe our veterans everything. We're going to create the best secretary for veteran services across the entire country, and I want you to lead it. And at first, I'm like, wow, you're talking about the same place where 100 veterans died, the same place that has had a whole host of issues that have negatively impacted our veterans? Let me think long and hard about this. Took me a couple of days, not much to do out in Syria, just look at sand, I guess. And I called her back, and I thought about my own service as a reservist, I thought about my passion for government and advocacy, and what we can do to best support our veterans, and I called her back. And I said, Gov, absolutely, count me in, I'm 100, 10% on board. And for the past 16, 17 months, since I swore on March 1st, we've been doing just that. So I'd like to share with you a little bit about what we've been up to over these past couple of months, because we had some burdensies to address, particularly with respect to the homes. But we, the staff and I, and the governor, and the lieutenant governor, both of which have connection to the military, both of which care very much about the role the military has in the Commonwealth across the country, have put forth a tremendous amount of resources, effort, and advocacy to make sure that we are supporting our veterans. So when it comes to the homes, what have we done? Two homes in Massachusetts, one in Chelsea and one in Holyoke. We secured the federal funding to build a brand-new home in Holyoke. It's a $500 million project. And I know we're a bit far away from Holyoke, but if you were to go out there today, you would see a lot of construction going on, you would see a building that currently today is ahead of schedule. At Chelsea, we completed a brand-new veterans home. Has anyone had a chance to go out to Chelsea, see the new home by chance? If you haven't, maybe we'll set up a trip so that you folks can come out and check it out. It is an amazing building, I can tell you as a physician, that building, when it comes to long-term care, state-of-the-art, I would challenge you to find a better long-term care nursing home institution across the entire state or country that is amazing as that one. It's also 100% fossil-free as well. We had the secretary of the VA come down here, Dennis McDana, to ribbon cut and open it up, and I can't remember the last time the secretary of the VA was down here, just excited to share this new opportunity with us. It is up and running, we hired a brand-new director to take care of that, to operate that new institution, her name is Christine Baldini, 25 years of nursing home experience. Because what happened, when it wasn't, when it was Department of Veteran Services, before the new legislation, you didn't have to be a nursing home administrator to take care of a nursing home, which sounds kind of crazy thinking about it. But now we've put in a place, the leadership that we need, people with skills, abilities, to make sure that what happened in 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic will never happen again. So if you go out there, take a look, it's the brand-new shiny object on a hill. And in addition to that, there's this domestory component where we house about 100 veterans there. That place is currently in the midst of a plan to get redeveloped to build more veteran housing, 200 units of veteran housing. So we're pretty excited about what we're doing at the homes, how we're evaluating the situation and turning it around as fast as we can, because our veterans deserve that. I will also say, we're expanding capacity. That old veteran home, there were less than 100 veterans there at Chelsea, the max at Chelsea would be 154, at Chelsea, at Holyoke, I think it's going to be 234 veterans when it's all said and done. And we're excited about working with our legislative partners to make sure that veterans all across the Commonwealth, not just Holyoke and Chelsea, can participate. Because we changed the names of these homes. For a long time, as you know, there was the Holyoke Soldiers' Home, or the Chelsea Soldiers' Home. I just want to be very clear with everyone here, who might not be able to access Holyoke or Chelsea, that these are Massachusetts veterans homes, right? It doesn't belong to the folks at Holyoke, the folks still, they belong to you and everyone here. But how do we get folks like yourself to participate in that? We're looking for opportunities across the entire Commonwealth to bring forth some geographic equity when it comes to that, right? Because it's a pretty good deal when it comes to, if anyone has a parent, or a sibling, or a family member in long-term care, it's pretty expensive. This is quite a deal, and this is an amazing opportunity for our veterans across the Commonwealth. So we're working on actively seeing what we can do when it comes to geographic equity and long-term support for our veteran community. But what else have we done, right? I think we've talked about this, we put forward the most comprehensive veterans legislative bill in decades, it's called the HERO Act. 17 proposals about inclusion, modernization, and expansion of services. I've always said, the governor cares very much about this, we put this bill forward, as I said, the most comprehensive veterans bill in decades. The House has taken it up a couple of weeks ago, they added a couple of things, made it even more comprehensive, and this Thursday, Senator Feeny and his team over there will be taking the bill up in the Senate to get it done. I'm confident it's going to pass the Senate, it already passed the House, and they'll work together to come up with a broader bill that will be called the HERO Act, that I hope can get to the governor's desk before the end of the legislative session, to make sure that our veterans will get the best care in this entire Commonwealth. In addition to the HERO Act, we also put forth the largest investment, the one-time investment, to end veterans homelessness. Now, this is something I care very much about, as the commander said, or as Rep Hawkins said, I'm a physician, I'm an ER doctor. My work as an ER physician is primarily done at Boston Medical Center. It is a safety net hospital in Boston, Massachusetts. The vast majority of my patients are very poor, I have a whole host of challenges that they have to deal with, are dealing with substance use homelessness, a variety of different mental health issues, and so for me, supporting folks who have mental health, substance use, homelessness issue means a whole lot. Turns out that a lot of folks in our veteran community have those same issues. And so when I started to think about how we can best support our homeless veterans in the Commonwealth, we did a lot of research, we looked all across the country with respect to what's happening, the programs, the states, the policies, the resources that are needed to do that. So if you look at the data right now, and I'm a very data-driven guy, it's my physician background, you know? Per the, per the data, there's about 540 homeless veterans across the Commonwealth, right? That's something that we can get to, that's something we can end. And so we put together a plan, $20 million to do just that. It's a five-point plan, a lot of it focused on advocacy outreach to go get those veterans, to make sure that they're cared for, and some of it is about capital investments. As the mayor knows, as I'm sure our representative and our senator know, Maura Healey's number-one agenda is housing, housing, housing. This impacts everyone, all of us, right? Particularly our veterans as well. So we want to make sure that our veterans in the Commonwealth who have issues with respect to housing are getting that addressed as soon as possible. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be announcing the winners of the first part of that grant, who got the money out there to make sure veterans all across the Commonwealth have access to outreach services, housing placement, and special services to get them housed. We're really working with developers in the public and private sector to make sure that we can build enough housing to get them where they need to go. The thing I'm also excited about with respect to what we've done, when I took a look, when I got to the secretariat, we had to do a lot of changes, right? We analyzed what's going on, there were a lot of gaps, and I realized that there were a whole host of things, but as a veteran myself, that I may not have needed, but a lot of veterans need, particularly with respect to education and employment. I would imagine, and I think, you know, service folks in the room would probably agree, when a veteran comes back from service, we get their DD 214, the paper that says, "Thank you for your service, active duty," it doesn't actually say thank you, but you know, you know what I mean? That they want a job, right? And they want to get access to educational services, right? When I walked into this office, we had almost zero activity, zero programs for folks in the employment space, right? We created a brand-new office called the Veteran Education and Employment Training Office, to make sure that veterans, when they come back, they were coordinating with federal, local, and state offices, to make sure that there are plentiful opportunities to get veterans, to point them in the right direction when they come back looking for employment. In fact, one of the things in the HERO Act is that we've increased the veteran hire tax credit. If you're a small business in the Commonwealth and you want to hire a vet, here's a tax credit for you. We've also done a significant amount of work in the education space, another space that we were completely irrelevant in, right? A lot of veterans in the Commonwealth want to come here, want to get educated, people come here to get education, but we were not active in that space at all. So in that Veterans Education, Employment, and Training Offices, now we have resources, staff that are willing to help those people. We've also significantly expanded our women's veteran network, as you know, women, fastest-growing community in the veteran space. There was not a done a couple of years ago, where they said, you know what, DVS, Department of Veteran Services, is not doing their job with respect to women veterans. You know, we had the homes issue, we had a variety of issues. We went to work, we hired staff, and we're turning that around. So we're excited about what we've been up to over the past couple of months, again, 16 months, but who's counting? But we can't do it all without you. A big part of my experience as a physician, as a former state representative, and as a community organizer, is the importance of engagement, the importance of working closely alongside even nonprofits, the legions, the VFWs, the local cities and towns. And to realize that, listen, we don't have all the answers, right? But we need to engage with folks who might have the edges, people on the front lines. The reason why I still work a shift in the emergency department is because being in the emergency department reminds me of what's happening in the real world. I get to hear the stories from those people who share with me the grief, the pain that they have, and it reminds me of what's happening, right? So when I'm on Beacon Hill sometimes, having these meetings in a room full of suits, that I don't get lost and I forget what's happening. This is why at some point that we're out there in the community, engaging and speaking with each and every one of you. And with that said, what we've done in our office is we created a brand-new engagement office. I said, our team, we need to be everywhere, engaging folks, learning from folks, listening to folks. In my first 90 days, we visited every county. I think I've visited 100 of the VSOs out there across the Commonwealth, to listen, to learn. And listen, we're not going to agree on everything, and that's okay, but I have to know what's happening, to be the best advocate for veterans across the Commonwealth. So with this new engagement office, we've done just that, we've put a significant amount of money, and resources, and staff, to have folks just engage with you. If you call our office, whether it's a simple citation request, or it's someone looking for resources or services, we want to be there to pick up the phone and say, how can we help you? That's at least what we do. So we're excited about what we've been doing for the past 16 months, but we have so much more work to do, and we want to do it in conjunction with all of you. So I'm happy to end there with my remarks, but I just want to share with you a little bit about what we're doing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because of Governor Healey, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, because of our fantastic legislative colleagues here. But with that, I'm happy to take some questions and have a conversation with you. Yes, sir.
Now, Mr. Secretary, an issue came up where we needed a veterans' grave officer. My wife, again, a spouse, she put in for the job, went through the whole process, only to find out it has to be a veteran. My question is, what did she do when I was deployed? What did she do when I got home? The adjustments we had to make, I mean, she had to take care of the kids, she had to take care of the house, she had to take care of everything. And yet, I was the only one qualified for the job, I don't know. I think there are a lot of spouses out there that could qualify and should be given that opportunity. Now, it is a mass state law, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, yes, it is.
It's a mass state law. I wonder if we could take a look at that. As I've said, spouses have gone through almost as much as any veteran that's been sent off the scene for whatever reason.
And the position, the position was for a veteran's grave? Is that, is that a municipal position, or is that?
It's an unpaid position.
Well, I don't, I can't speak to specifics about the job, but I'll look into it, we'll communicate afterwards. Corey is in my office back there, so if anyone has any questions or wants to follow up on some stuff, please connect with Corey. But let me, let me speak to your bigger point, which I 110% agree with you. We need to be looking at not just the veteran, but the veteran family. Sir, you are absolutely correct in saying that when you were deployed, who was at home? Who was dealing with issues of you being away? When I got back from Syria a year ago, I left my six-month-old kid with his mother, my wife, and her family doesn't even live in the country, right? And my family doesn't live in the state, right? And so as hard it was for me to leave my six-month-old child, who was just born, and leave my wife alone here while I was gone, it was challenging. That's why I'm very proud that when Governor Healey, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll think about the veteran, they don't think about the veteran as a solitary unit, right? They think about the family component as well. And a lot about what we've been doing in our office is to really respect that, not just the veteran, but the veteran experience, be it a woman veteran, be it a veteran of color, making sure that veterans, irrespective of where they come from, who they are, what they look like, get the care that they deserve. And that includes their family as well, because you're absolutely right. And so, yeah, we'll have to follow up with you and take a look at that and see, you know? But I think, let me just say this also, this is just me personally speaking, you know, and I say this with all due respect to the veterans in the room, sometimes our veterans can be very, you know, we're very proud of our status, right? Whether you served in the Army, the Navy, you know, this, or that, and listen, I'm an Army guy, I'm a veteran, but there are multiple ways to serve your country, right? And, you know, when I come into my office, a lot of veterans there, or non-veterans there, I want to make sure that everyone feels a part of the team here, right? We are all part of the team, right? We serve the Commonwealth, right? We want to make sure that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is the best in the country when it comes to veterans, and that includes supporting our veterans, but also supporting their families as well. One more question, if I may? Should the boss hear?
Again, spouses of veterans, when that veteran passes away? I know Ben, you know, they go to Ben and they talk to Ben, and Ben can get them whatever they need, as far as Chapter 115, if they need that. I think my other question would be, I know the VA, VA is quote Veterans Hospital, how about the possibility of a spouse of a veteran would die, be able to use the VA? Because again, money-wise, that'd take a chunk of money out of them.
Yeah, let me say this, I'm a VA patient, right? So I get my care at the VA, I'm very happy with my care. And I think as someone who's worked also in the non-VA healthcare setting, you know, you could put the VAs up against any public, private sector hospital in the country, and the statistics will show you, again, for data-driven, that the care is just as good, if not better, at the VA, and we're very proud of that. Now, let me just be very clear that the Massachusetts Executive Office of Veteran Services is not the VA, right? We're completely different animals, but we work closely together, right? A big point of mine when I first got here is to see what the relationship is with the VA and our team, how are you working together, right? And it's been my experience that for a long time, we were working in silos actually, which was unfortunate. They have a women's program, we have a women's program, although there's a lot of redundancy, not a lot of communication. And if you take a step back, the VA, federal VA, big VA, it's a $400 billion organization, tons of resources, tons of money, tons of expertise, right? We don't even compare to that, right? So strategically, it's important for me to get on that bandwagon, right? One of the first things I did was to call the secretary of the VA, I said, listen, I want to work closely with you, if you want to try new things, experiment new things, come to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and let's do that here, right? Took me up a offer, right? He came here, he visited, we spent a couple of days together. I've spent a number of days working closely, meeting with the VA medical centers, right? To meet their leadership, to engage with them, to make sure engagement and team is tapped in with them, to say, listen, if you're working on women issues, we want to work closely with you, we want to combine our teams here. If you're working on, and we've been able to do that, because for a lot of VA services, you have to have certain eligibility. And I said, for the, for the veterans you can't serve, because of the discharge sets, whatever, let me know, so we can come up with innovative program to support them as well. So I'm not in a position to say, you know, the VA should, you know, do this thing, because I don't work for them, or we're completely different, I hear your concerns, I'm clear, there are some benefits, you know, for the spouses of veterans who have passed on here that will help, and help provide information for. But that's something I feel very passionate about, and I think my staff sees me do this like once a day, about the VA, the Massachusetts Executive Office of Veteran Services should be tied to the hip here. Because again, if I can get someone, I think Ben would agree, if we can get someone on VA benefits, I mean, Chapter 115, you know, that'll change their life, VA benefits. Chapter 115 is a great program, I'm very proud of it, it's one of the only programs like that in the country, but VA benefits, disability comms, that'll, that'll change someone's life, and we want to work more closely with the VA.
Well, I think I'm, I'm looking at two different, somebody needs Chapter 115 because of their financial situation, but you got somebody just, just on the border, just on the other side. That's why I was wondering if the VA and, you know, your office could look at maybe the possibility of, what are we doing, we're not giving them another patient because we lost one, we're not giving benefits, disability benefits per se, we're just giving them medical care, if that's possible.
No, always happy to engage with folks, so I think, again, as a VA patient myself, who cares very much about the VA, who's really enjoyed his care there, my care there, our goal is to expand VA care across the Commonwealth, right? And we've done a pretty good job with the PAC deck over the past couple of years now, and the more, the merrier. And so your point's well-taken, and you know, I'm with you 110%, you know? But obviously, it's not my decision to make or call, but I think making sure that the secretary at the big VA knows that we want their presence felt here, that we want to support their spouses and their families, is a commitment.
Give me a snuggle, I'll call.
Okay.
And who knows, I will.
I just met you, I know you will. Anyone else have any questions? Want a conversation, someone?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Jakes with the firefighters, and also an Iraq War veteran. For years, we've been working with the legislature to update veterans' buyback program. And thankfully, under the HERO Act, under your administration and Governor Healey, that language has been included. I just wondered if you could touch base on where that's at as far as through the House and the Senate?
Yeah, so the House passed the provision, so the bottom line is, there was a program where you could buy back up to four years of service, right? So think about, you go off to Iraq, you do some time in active duty, you come back to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you get a job as a firefighter, or as a police officer, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, anyone. And you get back, and you know when it comes, but when you transition back, it's like, what the hell am I doing, right? You know, you're not ready to make a decision right there whether... You know, you're not ready to make a decision right there whether you want to pay back four years, or maybe you don't have the money to do it, right? But I think with the current law, you got six months to make a decision. Six months, you know? You didn't even know where you're living, right? And so, we thought that was not the fairest thing, right? We thought we could do our veterans, give them more time, and I think what we proposed is, was a 10-year opportunity to do that. So it passed the House, it's in the Senate, I think the bill that came out of the Senate was very similar in line with the governor. So to me, it just makes sense, you know? You have these folks, if you, if you want to be serious about the buyback option, to give veterans the opportunity to buy back some time, we'll give them a real opportunity to do just that. We felt that, from personal experience, from talking to veterans, that that wasn't the case at all. It sounds like there was advocacy for a long time trying to get this bill done, and hopefully, I'm confident that, it sounds like the bill is, is moving very fast along in the Senate. Thursday, Thursday they take it up, you know, the Senator would know more than me, but it's, the provision is in that bill, so I'm hoping, I'm optimistic about it. And then, then as you know, the bills come together, there's some sort of, they work it out, the differences, and hopefully it gets to the governor's desk. So my hope is that we will see that provision and the final bill that gets to the Senate at the governor's desk.
Thank you, we appreciate that. I remember, very excited, audio will change lives, so thank you very much.
No, I think, for, for me, it's like, you know, I think, when I've talked to veterans and do my research and on the ground, or on Google, it always surprised to me how, if you read any report, you know, and we're, we put some reports out there to, to better understand the situation across the Commonwealth, but there are a number of good, decent benefits in the Commonwealth. The problem is, is that people just don't know they exist, right? So there's a gap between what we have and what people know what we have or don't have, right? And so, how do we better communicate these things, right? So for example, we revamped our website, we created this engagement team, because you could be doing all this amazing work, have all this great program, but if the veteran does not know, what's it worth, right? And so, a lot of our focus has been on, listen, let's tidy up the programs, make them more efficient, make them better if we can legislatively or regulatory-wise, but let's place the emphasis on making sure veterans know about it, right? I'll tell you a story, when I got back from deployment, I didn't even know that there was a, a bonus about when veterans come back from certain deployment zones. I didn't know that. And, and here I am, pretty well-read, I think, you know, access to the computer, fairly young, who can like Google things, and I didn't know that. And so, it dawned on me, it was like, if I didn't know that, and a thousand bucks isn't going to make or break me, but, you know, a young veteran coming back from a combat zone, who needs to take care of his family and daughter or son, a thousand bucks could mean a whole lot for them, right? And those lost opportunities really, really irked me, and so we wanted to do a bit more when it comes to engagement, and I think the, the buyback piece is one of those things, you know? You have folks come back, and you know how it is, it's like, you might be moving to a new state, you might, you know, and you're not in a position to, to, I think I'm going to pay back four years, I don't know if I'm going to be there for four years, right? So we're excited about that, and we're glad the governor included it, we're glad the House has, and, and the bill that came out of the Senate Ways and Means included that as well. So, all things are pointing in the right direction, but, you know, it's not done until it's done. And so, if you're out there advocating, keep on advocating, keep on pushing, your senators and your representatives, you have two here that, you know, support the bill and are very big fans of the military and the veteran community, and they're doing just that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Walter Thibodeau, the adjutant for American Legion Post 312. As a gateway city, Attleboro has extra benefits or extra opportunities. Wondering if, because we live so close to the Rhode Island border, many of us use the VA facilities in Providence, and I was wondering if there are connections between dealing with the VA in Massachusetts and the VA in Providence. I've gone through three primary care doctors within the last two years. They come and they go, which I guess is normal for that kind of profession, especially if they're trying to get years, finish their years of retirement or that kind of thing. But I was just wondering if, as a gateway city, if there may be things that we don't know about as, as far as communication between the two states for people who live in a gateway city and where it's more convenient for us to go to the Providence VA rather than one of the locations in Massachusetts.
That's a great question, sir. I think we could do a better job of knowing what's, what's happening across the border here. That's actually one of the VAMCs I have not visited yet. What I can tell you is that we have staff there. You know, when Ben sends a, a claim up to, you know, to the VA, we actually have staff, Massachusetts Executive Office Veterans Staff, that work out of that VA down there. When BASH vouchers, these are vouchers for homeless veterans, are distributed through the, the South Coast, all the way to the Cape, those BASH vouchers actually work through the Rhode Island VAMC, because that's how the, the VA is organized, through VA Medical Centers. And so, to your point, sir, making sure that connection is as tight as possible, something that we could work better on. Now, I said they were, they were previously there, they're currently there when it comes to, when you, when you, when Ben submits a VA claim and when the BASH voucher, and so, part of my job is to get more into weeds, make introductions. Like I said, I've met, I was out in Leeds, I've been out to Bedford, I've been out to Boston, I haven't set the Brockton up yet, but I should also set the Providence up one. And so, to your point, sir, I'll, I'll make sure that, I'll do that, and I'll follow up with you, make sure that, let you know when I connect with Providence and see what's happening there, and making sure that Providence is not just focused on the veterans of Rhode Island, but given the catch area that they, they take care of, that they make sure that they're not forgiving about us here in Massachusetts. Yes, sir.
I'm Henry Bruce, I'm the commander of American Legion Post 20 in here in Attleboro, I'm also active duty. And Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, has a large population of active-duty military, along with reserve components and National Guard components, and a lot of other states do have a lot of benefits for their active-duty personnel and moving around. I've done a couple of stints in Florida, but most of my career has been here in Massachusetts. What kind of benefits does the state offer, whether it's through your office or through the state itself, for active-duty people? I'm one of the few people from Massachusetts that I know who's not changed my state of residency. I know Florida gives tax benefits, New York gives benefits, whether it's for vehicles or stuff like that. What kind of stuff does Massachusetts give? Massachusetts is home to the first Coast Guard District Headquarters out of Boston. There's also two different Coast Guard sectors, one in Boston, one in Woods Hole. Mass Military Reserve, the Joint Base Cape Cod is basically Coast Guard-run, the exchange system and the air station and the base there. So there is a large population, not to mention all the Air Force bases, the Space Force Station on the Cape. But I know a lot of people, when I was stationed in Gloucester, lived in New Hampshire, just because there was benefits for them being active duty. What kind of benefits does the state give active duty?
I'm glad you asked that. I think, to your point, there's sometimes a divide between what, how we care for the services we provide veterans, people who completed their service, and people who, like you, sir, who are active duty, right? I think our office is trying to be more holistic about how we interpret the word servicemember, veteran, because it's all this continuum, right? And how we look at that is something that we're committed to doing, and so what we've done is, we've actually, you know, one of the first things I did was to do a 50-state analysis of who's providing services for veterans, and what we can do, how do we compare ourselves? And, and the bottom line, and I'm not comparing the active-duty situation, but when it comes to veteran services, there are a few that can compare with Massachusetts. I mean, chapter 115, I mean, I would challenge anyone to find a state in the country that offers a program, or if you're 200% of the federal poverty, you know, rate that we're giving you services when it comes to a variety of different things, medical stuff, housing stuff, you know? You know, there's a new that we offer for folks, for our folks who 100% disabled, Massachusetts, right? Massachusetts might be the only state in the country where we have 200-plus veteran service officers, right? Statistically required, DSOs who are out there in cities and towns, just like this gentleman doing the work here. Now, we put together, just to compile the information, we put, which we'll send you afterward, the Transition Toolkit, that really talks about what services we offer here. You know, we're trying to do a better job of making sure that folks who are active guard, are active duty, National Guard, are more aware of that, we develop, we developed a close relationship with the National Guard here, the TAG, to say, "Listen, like, your folks are pretty much, you know, they sign the dotted lines well, you know? They might be, you know, more active or in a different place right now than, than the active, you know, than the traditional veteran, but we could do a better job with that." So we do provide a variety of services, we'll get back to you with the Transition Toolkit. When it comes to license plates, I mean, we're running the HERO Act, you know, we're, we're saying that if you're a veteran, and I don't know if you're active duty, but I'll look into that, that you can get a free license plate. Right now, you have to pay for a license plate in the Mass, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, just to say you're a veteran. We thought we could do better than that, and so now we're saying it's going to be essentially free, right? But that's a good point, you know, we'll, we'll look into that and we'll get back to you with some more detailed responses with respect to, are there any specific active-duty thing? Because I can see situations where stuff is just for quote-unquote veterans, you have to have that DD-214. Now, for the reservists, it's a bit, you know, because they're reservists, but if they get a deployment, they get a DD-14 when they come back, so it's a bit, so you can call yourself as a veteran and reservist, whatever. But for the folks who are straight active duty, who have not had that DD-214, I could see where there'd be some hiccups there, maybe some resources that they don't get. But I'll look into it, I'll get back to you.
I know a lot of guys who are from Massachusetts who have finished their career in the state or is close to it, so they can stay, you know, come home to the Commonwealth, and they go, all military members, when they go through retirement or they're leaving the service, go through the TAPS classes, and I know a lot of them were, you know, through the Air Force, through the Coast Guard, especially, you know, the Commonwealth. Is there a way for your office to start working with those programs? To be, because a lot of people are, you know, going to retire back here in the Commonwealth, to work with those and let them know, all right, these are the benefits you can get through the state, because they know what they can get through the benefits of their retirement and everything.
Yeah, we just started those conversations, actually, because of the engagement. I said, "Listen, what are you guys, what are you, what are you folks doing?" To your point, right? Like, if, if anyone's been through one of these Army kind of, you know, it's the same old thing, it's probably same PowerPoint from like 20 years ago, and we are working closely, to your point, like, what is happening at the state level? Like, when I got back one time, I didn't know that there was a state $1,000 bonus for folks getting back, you know, until I was Googling it for my own job, you know? And if I didn't know, I can only, I can only imagine that there were tons of folks coming back of service who weren't aware of that, you know, as I said earlier, a thousand bucks could mean a lot to them, you know? So to your point, yes, those conversations have started, I think, two months ago, there was, I can't recall the name right now, it was the Brigadier General from the guard here who wanted to work more closely on this stuff. And I said, "What are you doing there?" Like, you know, "We'd like to get more involved with you, we'd like to be like this with you as well." And so, those conversations are happening, and they're ongoing.
Is there any plan to work with the first Coast Guard District out of Boston?
It's right next to our office. Yeah, it's on the street. So we, we know them. If they, if you have ideas, or if they have programs or sessions or communications that they're offering to folks and they want to be connected to us, send me an email. Anyone can always send me an email, I check all my emails, by the way, so it will get read, and we'll get back to you. But if you think there's an idea, back to that engagement piece, like, I only know, I don't know what I don't know, right? And so, if you're telling me that there's a gap that we have, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to say, "Listen, I don't know, educate me, inform me, help me fill out this gap, and let's work together," you know? Sometimes people say, "Well, we told you to do this," and I was like, "Well, it's a two-way street here, right? You gotta, you, you know, you want me to help you out, but you gotta, you know, help us out as well." But if you think there's an opportunity with the Coast Guard, you know, let us know, send me an email and I'm happy to set up something.
I'm stationed in Rhode Island, New York, at the Naval Base, or I can look up the information for Sector Boston and D1 Headquarters, and at least send you the information, we can make contact.
Yeah, yeah. We, we, we know the folks there, and obviously, they're not too far from my office, and we've seen them at a variety of events there. I think they just had a commander just change, I want to say, recently, yeah. But yeah, no, if, if anyone here has ideas or thoughts or concerns, let us know. And again, we might not agree on everything, and that's okay, and things might take a long time. As, as, you know, my former legislative colleagues know, things take a while, that place to work is magic, but I can tell you, dealing, if anything ever gets done, it's because people like yourself are pushing, advocating, and are fighting in a respectful manner. So, you know, we only have two options, we don't do any work and nothing happens, and we sit back and say, "We want this, we want that," or we put in the work, you know? And realize it might take a long time, but as I said, you know, if anything's ever happened, it's because people like yourself put the work in, organize, work together to get something done.
Another question, sir.
Yes?
Our organization, we, we go out, and I mean, we will call everybody or anybody, and through that, we've gotten connections with the Army National Guard. Commander Sergeant Major Up there, he's willing to come down and talk to the kids in school, unfortunately, it's the end of the year, right? These kids that are in the schools, we're finding that they don't know how to hold a flag. A lot of them don't know the meaning behind the National Anthem, which is, we told that story to 156th graders. It was dead silent while they watched the video and saw exactly how the National Anthem came to be. We need to do more of that with our kids in school. We need your help to do that.
Well, let me just say, I, I'm a believer in civic education, I think every elected official probably in the street would feel similarly, care very much about this country. We all come from different places, different histories in this country. I just got back from the Army War College last week, and literally a week ago today, I was touring Gettysburg, and it was interesting, fascinating, emotional as well, to see how brother against brother were fighting on this battlefield for the future of this country. And so, I think, it does a role for our office to play when it comes to educating the next generation or the current generation, when it comes to preparing folks, young boys and girls, to become the next generation of leaders, we're always happy to participate in that. What I said, our office created this new education office, was precisely for that. Now, these are middle school or high schoolers, these are folks in colleges who want to either be a part of the military or were in active duty and have come back to engage in the educational sector. And so, we want to have a presence in that, we want to engage with them, and we've done just that. And so, if there's a role for that, for, you know, if anyone has any ideas, we have to consider them and be a part of that, but I think everyone in this room, just, you know, by the nature of you just being here, I'm sure you feel it just as passionately and similarly when it comes to civic education and for this country. Anyone else?
Mr. Secretary, the fact that we have representatives and senators and yourself here, I mean, that's the push up, up at the top, right? So, but at the community level, the mayor has stood up a Veterans Council. Now, our whole, our whole goal as a F W in the American Legions is to, to assist and aid veterans, right, as veterans ourselves. So, so the key to that is education, right? You said it yourself earlier, we need to reach out to the veterans, we need to, we need to educate them on what they have, because you and I both know, when you come home from a combat zone, the last thing you're thinking about is anything to do with the military. You know, it's family, it's making up a time loss, it's, I don't want to deal with that. But we have to, we collectively have to find a way to reach out to these young men and women that are serving this country. And so, you know, through our board that the mayor stood up, we're trying to think of ways to reach out, of course, you've got websites and Facebook and, and all the new technology that's out there. Is there a way through your website, maybe through the municipalities, to SpiderWeb, and make connections so that we can, we can put this and try to reach as many people as we can through, through that media?
Well, to your point, it's really about how do we best organize, right? How do we stop working in silos? I think, are people familiar with the person by the name of Brian Concanon? Brian Concanon is a civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army. Massachusetts has one of those. It's, in fact, it's a pretty high-ranking position, it's actually a three-star protocol for this person, and he cares very much, and he's actually leading this position, and they'll be selecting a new one. This person's position is to support the goals of Big Army, right? They're nominated and selected by the Secretary of the Army, and they work in the Commonwealth. Now, it's a volunteer position, they're usually well-established business leaders who, after retirement, or, or nonprofit leaders or what have you, they, they served, they, they become the CASA, the Civilian Aid Secretary of the Army, and their goal is to really kind of preach the values of the military, make sure that the goals of Big Army are being transmitted across Commonwealth. transmitted across Commonwealth. Now, I got to know Brian a little bit over my time here, whether that's our efforts to bring Army-Navy here, or some of the stuff they're doing, and one of his biggest passions was education. And in fact, just two months ago, the Patriots in Gillette Stadium, they had an event there for high school educators, yeah? Talk about what's happened, I don't know if anyone participated in that conversation, but the fact that you didn't know about that, that's what you're talking about exactly, it's like, how, how do we know what's happening out there, right? And so better communication starts with that, right? And we could play a role in that for sure, because this is a prime example. We had, I don't know, probably, I don't know, 60, 70 high school counselors, teachers, trying to learn more about what role the military could play in their respective school districts, right? And you had some that were very well-to-do, they knew exactly how to, that the recruiters and that sort of thing, you had some that were just interested, right? Maybe there was a parent who that had served, and they were saying, well, we'd like this to be an opportunity as well. We're not saying everyone has to go to the military, but that type of stuff, we look forward to working with you all and to stay in close communication with my office, and that might be something like, like, what is my office doing right now with respect to the VFWs, the DAVs, the, the American Legion? Is there a listserv that we have? Are we pushing out communications? I can't say that we are, right? And so maybe that's an idea right there, right, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, and how are, how is our engagement team doing that more efficiently, right? So that's something that we should be thinking about, right? And, and happy to follow up with that. The guy that runs our chief engagement office, his name is Corey Ahonen, he's an Air Force veteran, he's actually a former VSO as well, and he's been great, really, at connecting with folks and putting the piece together. And again, this is a brand-new thing that we're doing, this engagement office, but we've given them, you know, several staff here to really build up the stuff. And so it's more just about answering the phone call if someone calls the question about Chapter 115, it's more about galvanizing folks. I'll give you an example, working closely with the Secretary of the big VA, I said, listen, we want to have a VEAC here, a VEAC, a Veterans Experience Action Center, right? What that is, is that the big VA, one of their big things is they're going across the country hosting these VEACs, right? I don't know if anyone's participated in one. It's pretty much like a one-stop shop, where you show up and you can get your paperwork, disability, whatever, claim, and get the, get an answer that same day, right? Because anyone who knows who's filled out the paperwork could take a long time, right? So they've had these all across the country, and they have not had one in Massachusetts. So I was in DC six months ago, and I was like, Mr. Secretary and everybody else, let's have one in Massachusetts. Let's have the biggest, baddest one in Massachusetts ever. And we're gonna have one September 4th at Foxborough, right? It's right around here, right? And so, yeah. And so, so this is gonna be Commonwealth-wide, but not just the Commonwealth, let's fight Rhode Island. I'm gonna call that my equivalent in Rhode Island, you know, New Hampshire, Maine. Let's make this the biggest, baddest VEAC, let's bus people all over the place, let's have tabling, let's have this, let's have a big wake from the VA come down here. And so, as you guys know, the Patriots are partners, they, they care very much about the military and our veteran community. So we're having one September 4th, and so it hasn't been pushed out yet because we're still getting the, the plans here, but it's going pretty well, it's just gonna be in your backyard here, so we hope that you guys can participate and play a role in that. Yes, sir?
One more question?
Of course.
Hi, my name is Tanya, I'm actually just, I work for the National Guard, and one of the things that we just had a meeting about earlier last week was financial literacy for our service members and their families, especially the younger generation coming in that yet don't have veteran status. I know the Commonwealth had a program called Operation Money Wise, maybe about 10, 15 years ago, and I think it's still in operation out there, but it's in a much smaller capacity. Is there any efforts from your office to hit upon this topic? Because I know it's something that we keep bringing up, we keep going up our chain, saying this is a huge need, they're not getting it as readily as they used to in schools prior to joining the military, and it would be a great thing if that's what comes to our office, is being well known.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry to interrupt you, yeah. I, I, I'm chomping at the bit here, because yesterday, the Deputy Secretary came to my office to talk about just that issue, financial literacy, particularly with our Chapter 115 clients, you know? You know, we give folks money, whether it's the folks, you know, on the poverty line here, or whether it's folks who just signed up, got a significant bonus here, are we best utilizing that money here? Now, I can't say in my office that we're actively working on that, I think this, the program she's referring to that lives somewhere else in state government. One of my jobs here, coming into the new secretary, is to see what's happening in the veteran space all across government, right? And to see who's active or not. I'll give you, I'll give you an example. The Department of Labor, right? Not the Department of Labor, but the Executive Office of Labor-Workforce Development, there's a secretary, my, you know, colleague, Lauren Jones, right? In her office, there's a mass hires program to help veterans get jobs, right? But did you know that my office had zero role to play with that? So, is it crazy, right? So, so a veteran Googles, I just get back from wherever, you know, Googling veterans' support, employment opportunities, Massachusetts, they're probably gonna find my office first, right? And it doesn't say anything, previously, it didn't say anything about labor stuff, right? So it was, again, those silos, right, that we're talking about. But I said, Secretary Jones, how about we work together? Because my guess is that the first time a veteran sees, you know, looking for service, they're gonna find my office, they're not gonna know about your program, right? And so her program, they get a federal grant, where they get to hire like 15 people, I think almost 20 people, to get veteran jobs, to disabled veterans, right? And the fact that we weren't even engaged with that didn't make any sense at all, right? So we're working closely together, we, we started the pilot study to get some VSOs to work closely with some of their folks, to fit their DevOps, these folks that look for jobs, to come up with a program here to support, better support that. And that'll be coming out soon. In addition to that, we did something, Virginia has a program called the Virginia Values of Veterans. Now, Virginia's a big, heavy veteran save military state, right? They have a program where they say, if you are a business out there and you want to hire veterans, right? Take this little course from us, it's online, right? And we'll post your business on our website, and we'll create a map of Virginia, right? So a veteran can get on there and just look at all the employers out there who have a certain military cultural competency who want to hire veterans, right? So if you go on their website right now, there are like hundreds of businesses fighting to hire veterans, because they know the values that veterans bring, right? So again, in my 50-state review, I said, wow, that's a pretty good program, right? Met several times, met several times with your staff, and just a couple weeks ago, we started our own, right? And so this is the idea, how we take, we don't want to recreate the wheel, right? What's happening, what's working, and how can we take those ideas and, and make them even better in the Commonwealth? This operate, you know, Corey, right, I'm sure Corey wrote the name down, Operation Money Wise, we'll look into that right now, because if there are programs, again, supporting veterans, we need to be engaged with that. And we're not here to take over the program, but we're here to work in collaboration with them to make it better, because the added value that we bring is this engagement factor, right? The fact that we're engaging with you all. Like, the Operation Money Wise people aren't probably going to VFWs, right? But they're probably doing other things, right? And so how can we better work with the folks, engage? And that's where I look at my added value, it's like, we're out on the street, we're engaging with folks, we got 6,000-plus Chapter 115 clients, 15,000 annuity clients, tons of stuff in the housing space, but do they know about the Operation Money Wise? I don't know, you know? Could they? Could we do a better job? Absolutely, and so we'll, we'll look, we'll look at that. Yes, sir?
Secretary, I just want to follow up on that, it's a great question, I think, huge unfulfilled need, not only for veterans, but for people across the Commonwealth. That, and, and I guess a more modern iteration of that program exists under the Office of Economic Empowerment through the Treasurer's Office. As Chair Financial Services, we're actually looking at doing a kind of omnibus financial literacy, financial education bill. Hopefully, we'll get that drafted before the end of the session and get some momentum for next year. And I'd love to work with, with you and your office and the veterans' community to really carve out a piece of that specific to veterans, because I think it is, it's a need for everybody, but, you know, especially veterans who, as we heard from previously, because look, the last thing, you're just trying to get stuff together, you're trying to get, you know, put pieces together, and to have that resource, I think, is invaluable, so.
Well, consider it done, Senator, we are more than happy to work with your team. Whatever research, points of contact you need, we feel it's important as well, and obviously, you know, we can't do it alone, you can't do it alone, we gotta work together here, and so we're more than happy to work closely with our legislative colleagues, because it really is a team game, Beacon Hill. I mean, I think there's the House, there's the Senate, there's the Governor, there really is three different visions and how you kind of coalesce those visions to put out this work product that we can all be proud of. So we're excited about that, but absolutely, Senator, I'm more than happy to work closely with you. Anyone else? Well, thank you so much for taking the time to chat with me, I'm sitting around, tell me there's breakfast here, right?
The head commander has something for you.
Oh, thank you.
Just to, just to let everybody know, people, people don't realize that Massachusetts does more for its veterans, I think, than any other state. If you check the numbers, we're very fortunate to have, to live in a community that cares about its veterans as much as they do, right, from, you know, the local to the state. And that $1,000 coming home is part of it, the, the license plate is part of it, the fact that you're here speaking to us, I just, I really want to thank all of you for being here, and Mr. Secretary, especially you, I mean, I, I understand. And you know what this is. This is a challenge coin, it's the VFW, it's our post-challenge coin, and with the challenges that you face, and our politicians face, and our veterans face, I'd just like to present this to you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
With all the titles, we have Mr. Secretary, we have Doctor, we have Major, and after-war college, he's heading to Full Bird, which is a really cool rank.
It was just a short seminar, it wasn't full class. No, no, no. Wasn't, wasn't cool enough, wasn't cool enough.
He rolls it on.
I, I have one last comment if I may, and this is something I use all the time on my desk. We don't have a problem, we can have a solution. That gives us the opportunity to excel. So, we gave you these questions today, and it'd be your opportunity to excel for veterans.
I want to add to this, add a little bit to this conversation, is that veterans here are very humble. I know you're talking about reaching out to the kids. 115 has a fantastic contest with the SAs, they moved it from five to 50 this year, am I right with the numbers? 50, 50? And probably more next year, they're always out in the schools. 312 has the program where you send kids to, Walter?
Boys State and Girls State.
Boys State and Girls State, there's a lot of engagement with the schools already.